I call to order the July 31st, 2018, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Please silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move now to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and limited to items that are not on today's agenda.
Norah Mano Salina, I'd like to repeat my request that maybe this county needs a review board. After you see what's been happening in the past, plus what's in the paper, this issue out on Country Club Road, we need to clean house. So, other cities in the state are getting a review board. I know these people. I know what went on. You've got some serious problems here, folks. So again, I'll repeat my request for a review board. Robert Mueller, maybe we need an independent counsel in here to investigate this place. Thanks.
Thank you.
Karen Shade Salina, I wanted to ask if the 2019 budget summary has been posted online or if that's available for public view yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. And I was wondering if salary negotiations with the two unions have concluded?
Not yet.
Okay. I was going through a copy of the budget. I read it, printed it off as part of the Open Records Act dated 7/6/1818. I noticed that salaries for department heads, some of them were looking very good. In subdepartment 022, in the administrative section, it looks like $65,000 was budgeted for 2018 and in 2019, $87,000 is budgeted. That looks like a $22,000 raise. With the new department senior services director was budgeted for $50,175 in 2018 and is going to $69,92 in 2019. Of course, all of these are maximum limits. That doesn't mean a person would automatically receive them. I also see, like with the county treasurer, whose salary in 2015 was $49,157 and is projected to be 20 in 2019, to be $67,300. That's almost an $18,000 increase in five years. Some of the department heads seem to be doing well. Some of them seem to be set block. There's no easy way for me to determine what's going on and I just think this might be of interest. Greg Stevens spoke a couple of weeks ago about how not paying the lower ranking staff can be very demoralizing. I'm sure the department heads earn their money. These don't seem terribly out of line for salaries to me for the responsibilities that are there, but I'd also ask that you consider the rank and file. Thank you.
There will be an open hearing on the budget next week. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one?
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda for today's public forum. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number two?
Approval of county commission minutes for July 24th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of July 24th, 2018 as presented.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the county commission minutes of July 24th, 2018. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number three?
Salina Community Economic Development Organization members agreement with Mitch Robinson, executive director.
Good morning Mitch.
Presented a little bit of a packet, and I'm looking at my calendar. I think I was here just in July, maybe June. I can't remember now exactly when that was. But not a lot of changes in the information presented before you, but the reason we're here today is we're going back to each of the funding founding organizations that created the Economic Development Organization. It's hard to believe, but a three-year cycle of funding has, will be completed at the end of this year. So we're going back to each of those groups. The Airport Authority has already approved it. The City Commission last week approved it. And then, so now we're back to you guys for your turn, if you're willing to commit to a three-year commitment again. We're asking again the same $20,000 that was funded in the original agreement. So I'd be more than happy to ask questions. I don't really, if you want me to go through the whole information, but we did it just really very recently.
I want to be clear that we have approved the 2019 request already. So that would be one year of the three years. Is that correct?
It's in the draft budget.
So what we'll be approving here then really is a two-year extension of what we have already approved on the first year. So are there questions from commissioners?
In your handout, you talked about a potential 100,000 square foot speculative building. Do you have a location for that?
No, we do not. We're just gotten into that process, working with some of the landowners and a local developer, just having very initial conversations on that commissioner. But I think, I think there's definitely a need here for both warehouse space and this was not, the intent would not be warehouse space. It may turn out to be that.
Yeah.
But production, production space. We get, State of Kansas, the Department of Commerce regularly sends us information about potential projects and they're, the vast majority of those are looking for buildings first. A lot of them would be very unique, you know, four or 500,000 square foot facilities, mainly when you've had a closure or something like that. So thinking 50 to 100,000 on a speculative basis, but we're just really in very preliminary discussions on that.
Okay. From my two cents worth, economic development is very important, not only to the city of Salina, but also Saline County. And we're progressing in that direction, it seems like. So I would like to recommend that we do approve these extra two years on the, for the three-year commitment that we've already made on the 2019, 2020, and 21. So other comments from the commission?
Question of Rita, would that be binding to future commissioners if we approved three years?
It will be, but it will also have to be under the case basis law. If there wasn't money, you know, it's just a natural thing with our statute that we can't fully commit until we know we have the money. But yeah, but it was in the original agreement that we'd do this every three years by August the 1st and commit for the next three years. So that was under the original agreement three years ago.
And I'll make the comment that three of the commissioners are up for reelection with no opposition. So really the commission is going to remain the same for at least the next two years and the majority for the next six years. So that's another way to look at it. And I also would like to say that if we have a bond commitment, a 20-year bond as an example, I mean, that's committing future commissions to that bond also. So that's not a stumbling block for me anyway. So at this time then, I would take a motion from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I move we authorize the chair to sign the agreement for financial support in the amount of $20,000 annually for the 19 through 21 as requested.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we sign the members' agreement for financial support in the amount of $20,000 annually for 2019 through 21 as requested. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you Mitch.
Move on to item number four.
RFA 173-18, bid award for project 18-5376, polymer concrete overlay with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Morning Darren.
This is an RFA to discuss and take appropriate action on Saline County Road and Bridge Department's request to award a contract for the furnishing of all materials, equipment, and labor and doing all the work, whatever kind necessary, to construct deck repair and multi-layered concrete overlays for the Halsted Bridge, one tenth of a mile north of State Street. Seal bridge is for the project number 18-5376, deck repair and multi-layered polymer concrete overlay. Were opened on July 16th, 2018 at 4:00 p.m. Three companies submitted bids. The bids plus engineers estimate are indicated in the following table. Bridges for $83,566. PCI roads, $57,640. Betis Asphalt Construction, $52,885. The engineer's estimate was $90,000. Bid was reviewed by the Road and Bridge Department engineering staff and calculations have been verified. The alternatives for action would be to accept the reg, staff recommendation, reject bids and rebid. Staff recommendations that we award to contract the project number 18-5376 to the low bidder, Betis Asphalt Construction Company of Topeka, Kansas, in the amount of $52,885. Staff recommends that funds from the 125, the Road and Bridge Special Bridge Construction, which we call the two mil account, be used for these deck repair and multi-polymer concrete overlays. This account has a current unencumbered balance of $896,582.41. If the county commissioner elects to award this project and fund it from the 125, then the remaining unencumbered in the amount account would be $843,697.41.
Darren, is this the new bridge that we're talking about?
This is the new bridge on Halsted Road. About 10 years ago, we started putting this polymer overlay on our bridge decks and we started doing the older bridges. And the ones on the asphalt road, I had some pictures. We like to do within a year of their construction, especially because of the salt that we apply to the roads. And every, every bridge deck is not perfectly flat. It has what I would call, for lack of a better term, micro divots. And so when that salt and water collects on the deck, you know, you get a little bit of freeze thawing, but it's more for the salt to keep it from penetrating the concrete.
And that's not a process that could have been done when the, when the road was originally closed in the first place?
No, it is not. Usually they'd like to get it open. Brad's got some pictures up there. You see the little white marks on the, on the deck? They're not, they're more of a cosmetic thing, but they are just little divots that will hold water. And if you go to the next one, next slide, you can see. But it's just to keep the, the salt from penetrating the deck.
How long will this close the bridge up for again then?
It would be three to four days. It says bridge deck polymer, bridge deck repair polymer overlay. Very no repair on the deck. It's they, they come in and shot peanut with steel, with steel shot and then they put this epoxy coating on it and cover it with a chat.
Looking forward to other projects, is this not something that we can do right on top of, you know, I mean, while the bridge is closed and all that, the first, to begin with or not?
You know, I, I would say it would be not difficult, but at a later date, they could be bid with it. It could be part of it. When they, when they build a bridge, it could be put in the contract for this to happen also. It sure could.
Questions from the commissioners?
How many other bridges have we done this on?
You know, I would, I would say probably 20 or 30 of them.
Is there a curing that needs to take place before you do this on a new bridge or?
You know, I couldn't answer that. I can find out, but I don't really think so, so much. You know, you get the 28-day cure and then break your cylinders and at that time, the bridge is as hard. It's not going to affect that process. Now, the, the polymer decking itself has a very quick cure time, maybe a day. It can, it can only be done in certain types of weather. It can't be too hot or too cold. If it's too hot, it sets too quick for them to get the aggregate on. And if it's too cold, it doesn't set.
Is this something that would normally come from the engineer?
Yes.
Request?
Yes.
And you're picking up the slack in that regard?
Yes.
Are there any public comments?
You got them figures again Darren on the engineer's estimate and the low bid. You went by so fast I didn't get them all wrote down, please.
The engineer's estimate was $90,000.
Right.
The low bid was $52,885.
Alright, thanks.
Further comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for project number 18-5376 to the lowest bidder, Betis Asphalt and Construction Company of Topeka in the amount of $52,885.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we award the bid for RFA 173-18 to Betis Asphalt and Construction, 52, for $52,885. I will ask, when, when would this start or when's the timeframe? Is it on there?
Late August to early September and the bridge would be closed from four to five days.
And we're right back in the middle of a fall harvest deal again and again. I just keep bringing this up and it just doesn't seem to get anywhere. So. Alright, we'll back to the question. All those in favor of, of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number five?
RFA 174-18, bid award for project 18-5374, the Waterwell Road Bridge with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
This is to discuss and take appropriate action on a Saline County Road and Bridge Department request to award a contract for the furnishing of all materials, equipment, labor, and doing the work, whatever kind necessary to construct a concrete haunch slab bridge. Got a picture there that shows the location in the county as to where, it's about one mile south of the town of Kip and about one mile east. It's on Waterwell Road, three tenths of a mile east of Niles. This bridge was built in the 1920s or 30s prior to consolidation of the county road system from township to county in 1942. We do not have any plans for this bridge construction. It was scheduled to be replaced on the 15-year bridge plan in 2020. But in 2016, by order of the federal government, KDOT started load rating all our bridges. They, they went around and started load rating bridges and checking the load ratings from the signage. And that hadn't happened in Saline County since the early 90s. And when they inspected this bridge, they derated it from 15 ton to three ton in 2017. And so this really makes, it changed the classification on this from structurally obsolete to structurally deficient, three-ton bridge. Just not, this is over three ton. And this bridge is on the primary rural road system, which makes it a prior, priority for our department. We do have sealed bids. Were opened on July 16th at 4:00 p.m. for project 18-5374, which is for the construction of a three-span, 30x40x30, concrete haunch slab bridge to replace the existing deteriorated load-rated three-ton bridge located on Waterwell Road, two tenths of a mile east of Niles. Four companies submitted bids. The bids plus the engineer's estimate are indicated in the following table. Reese Construction for $323,724.60. King Construction for $334,492.50. L&amp;M, $318,162.50. Bridges Incorporated, $424,684. The engineer's estimate was $402,672. They do have the proposed time of construction off here to the right. Alternatives for actions are accept the staff recommendation, reject all bids and rebid. The staff recommends award of the contract of $318,162.50 to L&amp;M contractors for the construction of a three-span 30-by-40, 30-foot concrete haunch slab bridge to replace the existing deteriorated low-rated bridge. Staff recommends that funds from the 125 Road Bridge Special Construction account and bridge and culvert replacement be used for this project. If the polymer overlay project is awarded, the remaining unencumbered balance in this account is $843,697.41. If the Board of County Commissioners elects to award this project and fund it from the 125, then the remaining unencumbered balance in the account would be $525,434.91. Because of the location of this bridge, it would not impact harvest that much. Because of its three-ton rating, it should not be being used anyways. And the aerial photography shows everything to the west of there is mostly pasture land. So anybody who has crops to the east, it's just maybe a mile and a half to get to Kip Road, which is a good hard surface road.
Do we have a traffic count on that road?
31 cars per day.
Is it a school bus route, road?
It is, it is. It's one of our, what we call primary rural routes and that's, that's the routes that the bus is supposed to go.
Well, I'm concerned with a couple of issues here. Number one, that Reese Construction is going to do the project in about 90 days. And it's going to take, what, five, six months for L&amp;M to get the thing done?
This is a very shorter span bridge. It doesn't really, all it does is requiring them to remove the old bridge and then, and then start back with new. With the one, with the, with the one that you're talking about, they had to modify existing structures and put up a lot of false work. This is a, what is it, 100, 100, 100-foot span? The other one was over 160.
I'm talking about the, the ones right here on this bid sheet. Reese Construction is going to do the, do it in 90 days and L&amp;M is going to start in September and not finish until February.
Right. I couldn't explain that. I'm sorry.
Is there, is there anything in, in the contract for, you know, days late or anything like that?
You know, I'm sure there is a liquidated damages clause. I do not know what it is.
I've, I've got, I've got trouble with all that, I guess. To me, Reese Construction's is the, is the better bid, even though it's $5,000 more. I mean, to only close the road for 90 days and do it in the, the wintertime versus, I mean, you do it like quickly in 90 days, January through April versus L&amp;M's, that September is going to be closed for six months. So I'll let other commissioners weigh in.
Rita, we don't have to in this situation take the lowest bid. This is back to our policy of taking the best bid, correct?
That's correct.
But I think, I think the question is, the proposed time, is that contractual? And I'm sure being bridge construction, there's got to be some type of weather clause in there. Whether L&amp;M was more conservative in their estimate than what Reese might have been more aggressive in their estimate. I need to see that verbiage in, in the contract to see if, if it's, if they're held to those times or whether that's just what they're proposing.
It says right here.
It is just proposed.
Proposed, done.
Oh, so, so they aren't held to that. They're just, that's what they're saying it should take. But there isn't any contractual agreement that that's all the time they'll have.
I could not answer that.
And on the, on the start-stop dates, it's like me, as, as getting back to one of our major concerns here is during the harvest time. I would rather have it where L&amp;M is working in the winter months and taking that chance of the weather and ending in February than if we go with the 4/19 and we have a wet spring and they, they can't get in there for the harvest time again, which is a month or two after that. I mean.
Actually, L&amp;M is starting during, right during the harvest time, during the fall harvest in September and finishing in the winter. And Reese will finish before harvest time. Their proposal is.
Hopefully, yeah. I mean, yeah, but that's. Does this have to be passed today?
It does.
I'll get back to what Commissioner Wees has said. I would mind seeing the contract. Is that, is that something that we could put off for a week and look at the contract? Because I agree. I mean, if they're held to that, that date, that first bid is by far the better bid.
Well supposedly, on the Halsted Bridge as an example, Mr. Cable indicated that there was a, a, a penalty for not sticking to the days that were allocated. So I would assume that would be in there.
It may be the number of days from start date to finish date too, which wouldn't relate to this here. You know, if that's what the, we just need to look at the contract and see what the verbiage is on, on that.
Well, I would assume that all of these companies have a clause in there that, that Mother Nature would come into play and things outside of their control.
But it's limited to a certain amount of days. I mean, if.
It'd be good to see the verbiage and see how it reads.
I, I would just, I, I don't think that we would err by just putting this off a week and looking at that because, you know, the Halsted one just didn't work out real well for us and the timing of it. And I, I just think it's prudent to just table it for a week and, and I, you know, look at the contract. Be an education for me too, to see exactly what the verbiage of it is.
And another question is, just because they're proposing that, could we go back to, to the low bid and say, we'd rather you start a month later?
I wouldn't believe so. I mean.
I mean, surely.
It would be just a matter of calling. I have the contract here. I do not see any proposed dates and, or dates of construction.
Well, I've, I've got two issues with, with L&amp;M myself, and that is, number one, the start date and the length of time that it's going to take to do it. If they were to be able to meet something in the, in more in the neighborhood of what Reese is proposing, then, then they are low. But the, the times and the, and the length is what troubles me with that bid.
And it could be that they have made these bids based on their workload too, you know?
I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
And so that could be the reason there's so much difference. Yeah. Yeah, I know, but that, if that's the case, they probably won't negotiate on start times.
Alright, is there any further conversation from the commission? I'll weigh in for a public comment here real quickly.
This goes back to that Cheney contract out at the Road and Bridge Department. You're creating conflicts. Like you said, you're going to put it off for a week. Sounds like a pretty good idea because you're going to get somebody involved again and it's going to cost the county money.
I don't, is there a motion from any of the commissioners regarding the RFA 174-18?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I move we table project 18-5374 for one week and direct staff to work with the county attorney on, on the language of it and, and bring it back to us next week.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we table this item for one week pending further notification from, and I'd also like to interject that I think we need to clarify from the contractor if they can, if they can change their dates. Is that amenable to that?
I will amend my motion to say that.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Table until next week. Item number six?
Medical stop loss proposal with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Morning Marilyn.
Morning commissioners. We are currently working through our renewal for upcoming October 1st plan year for our insurances. The stop-loss renewal was coming in at a 9.8% increase to our stop-loss piece of our renewal. However, due to good claims experience so far, we are looking at a slight decrease to the medical and then a slight increase to the dental renewal. Our consultants requested a 5% decrease in our stop-loss renewal if we didn't agree to market or go to market on that stop-loss coverage. C-Biz did market the stop-loss coverage last year for us and we have been with HCC since we have gone self-insured back into. HCC since we have gone self-insured back in two thousand and three. Um, as of our, uh, renewal meeting last Wednesday with C-Biz, HCC had not yet responded. They did respond on Friday, last Friday, and they did agree to the five percent reduction in the renewal, but they did only give us a one-week deadline. Uh, so I'm asking today if we could get approval to accept the proposal. Um, it is recommended to accept the proposal because things could change very quickly with just one big claim. Um, and if approved, next will come the actual renewal document, uh, followed by a UMR Administrative Services Agreement. And we are also, uh, looking at a possible voluntary, voluntary vision plan, uh, change, uh, and those would come at a later date as well. So this request today is just for the stop-loss piece of the insurance renewal.
Questions of staff? Recommendations?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move we direct Human Resources to respond for the stop-loss proposal.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded, do we, uh, direct Human Resources to respond to, for the stop-loss proposal, or there, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven.
County Appraiser Update with Sean Robertson, County Appraiser.
Morning, Sean. Good morning.
I'll take this warning, uh, on the screen, just, uh, just to start with, we're collecting notes, and, uh, we, uh, from the state, we receive what amounts to a grade card each year. How will we get in setting values for that year than versus sale prices and properties that occurred after we set those values? Uh, the final two thousand and seventeen one...
Sorry. The final two thousand and seventeen one, uh, was given to us by the state a couple of months ago. Sorry. Uh, which compared our, uh, two thousand and seventeen values to the two thousand and seventeen sale prices that occurred after that. This was based on a sample of several hundred sales. Anyway, our ratio of value to sale price, uh, in two thousand and seventeen was ninety-six point one percent, and, uh, we met the compliance standards that are set by the state, have to be between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent. Um, two thousand and eighteen, our ratios, at least, uh, through the month of June, halfway through, uh, again, compares the January two thousand and eighteen values, uh, compared to sale prices that occurred, that have occurred so far during the year. And if you include all property types, our, our sales ratio, our, the value to the sale prices, ninety-seven point two percent. Residential properties is ninety-eight point two, and then commercial properties at ninety-five point four percent. Um, happening currently in our office, um, we are conducting annual review of properties, a sales review, which is ongoing throughout the year. Uh, we do have some Board of Tax Appeals hearings, uh, coming up in the next few months, and, uh, some educational opportunities for the people in our office. I go through each of those steps individually. Annual review takes place from May through September each year. Uh, we have our field appraisers out, uh, viewing, measuring properties throughout the county. We do knock on doors, interview property owners, um, to make sure that we have accurate information about those. We get asked the question all the time, "Do we go in?" No, we do not, for two different reasons. Number one, uh, it was explained to me many years ago, and I use this all the time, even the police can't come in without a warrant, so what makes you think that the appraisers could come in to take a look? Um, we can go in if invited, but for safety reasons, it is very, very rare that we do so. Uh, we do have appraisers review every sale that comes through, um, this time of year. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty a month. Uh, we take a look at each of, of those, and we view and inspect and photograph the properties and conduct interviews with either the buyer or seller from each sale to make sure we have accurate information about the property itself and about the conditions of the sale. And then we use those sale prices to help set the values for upcoming years. Uh, Board of Tax Appeals hearings, uh, we've gone over this before, but just as a reminder, we have the informal level, which is where people just come into our office, or they can do it on the phone, have a, an informal hearing with one of the appraisers in our office, and we take a second look at things and, and make any adjustments that need to. Uh, after that is the Small Claims Division of the Board of Tax Appeals, which can't, uh, can be done on the phone, or it, it doesn't have to be at the library, just in our case, that's where they're held. Uh, by statute, those hearings have to be held either, um, in the county or in an adjoining county. Every so often, we'll have to have a Small Claims Hearing in Abilene, but generally, they're here. Yeah, we get questions from property owners all the time, if they go to that level, do they have to go all the way to, to Topeka? And no, that's not the case. And with a very few exceptions, the ones that are in Abilene, it's either on the phone or just across the courtyard of the library. Then, the step beyond that is the Full Board of Tax Appeals. Uh, that's in Topeka, and that is a more formal courtroom-like hearing that's held in front of the three-member panel. Go over some statistics, uh, about the Board of Tax Appeals hearings, and first of all, uh, the informal hearings that we had this year, uh, we made value changes about sixty-five percent of the time. I have, um, gone over with my staff many times that the informal hearings are a time to explain the valuation process, explain how we arrived at the value, listen to them, and make any changes that are necessary. Once it moves beyond that, I mean, we've already set the value, then if they have an informal hearing, we've taken a second look at it. If the, if they choose to appeal on, beyond that, then it becomes more of a mode of defending what value we do have. Out of the forty...
Sean, let me, let me stop for just a second.
Sure.
Uh, if, if, the people that are appealing...
Yes.
Sixty-five percent of the time that they're, we're changing that, does that mean, does that have a, have a meaning that we're missing too many, or on the evaluation, or, I mean, the, the sixty-five percent seems like a high number to me, not being familiar with your, with your job, you know?
In general, what that means is there are, there's information about that property of which we're unaware. Um, the interior condition of the home, um, uh, basement or, or foundation problems. Sometimes it's a sale that has recently occurred, um, just in the past month or so. Um, the, again, in general, I don't want to, um, talk about, this happens all the time, but in general, these are minor changes and data changes that we make. Not that we have necessarily, um, overestimated the value. I think, uh, by the ratios that, that we have from our value to sale prices, it shows that when we have all the accurate information, we do an extremely good job of, of valuing those accurately.
Well, I know that we, uh, have to sign all the tax appeal changes, and it just, some of them are pretty significant, so I was just, just curious.
Right.
All right, go ahead.
Um, of the forty Small Claims Division and Full Board of Tax Appeals that have been decided over the past year, um, personally, I'm pretty proud of the fact that there are only four times that the, uh, that the property owners have been granted by either the Small Claims Division Hearing Officer or the Full Board of Tax Appeals, only four out of forty have been given the value that they requested. I think that points to the fact that we are able to do two things. Number one, present evidence in such a way that's meaningful and supports our values. I think that's a testament, number one, to our office, and, and number two, to having Mike Montoya as, as our county counselor, that it, it helps with those at the Board of Tax Appeals. But the second part is, we are the only county of which I am aware, there may be some, but we are the only county of which I am aware that conducts all our value analysis, um, on our own. Um, every county, every other county of which I'm aware contracts out some of that work. I think at the upper levels, when you have to explain where each number came from, it becomes difficult for other counties to explain numbers with which they did not work or come up with in the first place. So I think that, uh, it helps us in those upper levels to be able to explain that, and that's why, uh, when I hear from a lot of counties that they're always getting ruled against at the Board of Tax Appeals, I just sit there with my mouth shut, because that, quite honestly, rarely happens to us. We do have twenty-six hearings currently scheduled to be heard at either the Small Claims Level or the Full Board over the next few months. Many of those will, are, are heard on the same day, be a full day in Topeka, but, uh, twenty-six over several months is, uh, not an inordinate amount. Education, um, appraisers, uh, the county appraiser in particular, is required, uh, to, uh, maintain certain educational requirements, uh, by statute, um, and our field appraisers are required to attend, uh, educational opportunities that are set up by the state. Most of them are scheduled at this time of year, because we, um, are not holding informal hearings and we're not quite ready to set values for the next year, so it's a good time of year to have those. Um, additionally, I personally conduct periodic education and training sessions, uh, with staff generally on Monday mornings. Our office currently has two appraisers who have their registered mass appraiser designation from the state of Kansas, and then, uh, we have three additional people in our office who have met the education requirements, but, uh, have yet to pass, uh, a battery of three tests that they need to do in order to, to get that designation. So, those are the things that, uh, are occurring in our office currently.
Okay, uh, uh, questions or comments from Commissioners?
Sean, um, I don't believe you mentioned the numbers of the informal appeals that you had this year.
I don't have those in front of me. I know, uh, a ballpark number was five hundred.
So...
So out of twenty-six thousand, four hundred, uh, parcels.
So sixty-five percent out of five hundred parcels changes is not really significant, then?
No. A little over three hundred properties that, that we changed the value on, and again, out of twenty-six thousand, four hundred.
And the other question is, uh...
Yes.
Who does appoint the members of the Full Board of Tax Appeals for the state?
Those are appointed by the governor.
Okay.
So anytime that there is a, like any political appointment, anytime that there is a change in the party of what governor is, generally, those board members will change.
Understand, thank you.
All right, further questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, say, "Thank you, Sean, appreciate it very much."
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight.
Resolution eighteen dash two-two-five-four, cancellation of warrants with Rita Deister, County Administrator.
Well, Rita?
This resolution was, uh, requested by the County Treasurer. Uh, there is a state statute, fifty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-five, that allows for the cancellation of certain county warrants issued more than one year ago, and these would be, um, warrants or checks that are still outstanding, and in order to help with the bookkeeping and, um, the bank reconciliation, it's nice to have these unclaimed, uh, warrants to be removed. And there are two checks that they're asking that are still outstanding, over a year old. Uh, one is to United Partial Service, it was issued on one-six, twenty-seventeen, for one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, and there was a check, thirty-four, ninety-six, sixteen, dated two-ten, twenty-seventeen, to Derek Miles, and this check amount for eight dollars. And so the resolution is requesting that these, uh, warrants be, um, uh, canceled.
Um, I understand the eight-dollar amounts and so forth, that we don't go through a whole process of trying to get ahold of these people, but what about, what's the procedure or process, like with UPS, for a nineteen-hundred-dollar check? Do we contact them and ask them?
I believe, yes, they do send out, I believe they send out a letter, uh, asking them, I've seen them in our, our paid bills, uh, asking them if, um, if they have, still have the check in their, their possession, if not, if they wish to have it reissued, and if they don't hear back, then the one-year period, by statute, they can go ahead and cancel it.
So if we cancel this check for nineteen-hundred dollars, uh, is there a possibility that we could be rebuilt by UPS, once they have an audit, or whatever they, whatever their internal process is?
Well, I did look at the statute, and, and, I'm no lawyer, but from reading the statute, I think there is a possibility they can come back and file a claim.
Well, I'm not, uh, trying to circumvent anything, but it just seems like nineteen-hundred dollars, uh, I mean, we should maybe make an extra effort to, to, to see if they want their money or not. But, I mean, if they don't, uh, if they haven't responded to your requests, I mean, I, I get it from there. Further questions?
We started this process a couple of years ago because it had gotten built up.
Uh-huh. And I think last, um, last time we did it, there was a whole page full of checks.
Right, and I think we directed you to just do it once a year after this.
Yeah, they're trying to do good housekeeping, and it does make the reconciliation of the bank account much easier, if you don't have to go back to a bunch of outstanding checks.
Well, based on the number of checks that we issue, um, every week, why, this is a pretty insignificant amount, but...
Right.
I'm, I'm still alarmed that a, someone would, uh, particularly a large business would miss a nineteen-hundred-dollar check.
Well, I was amazed last year when I saw some of the names on the, on the list, that, and they were pretty close to us, that I would have thought they, and there were several issued to the same people, that you would think they would have missed some money there.
I guess they've got more money than I do. All right, uh, question, or, uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the cancellation of certain tax warrants as listed in Resolution eighteen dash twenty-two fifty-four, as recommended by staff.
Second the motion. Been moved and seconded that we pass, uh, Resolution eighteen dash twenty-two fifty-four, cancellation of warrants. Further comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Item number nine.
Twenty-nineteen, Saline County, Kip Sewer District, Enroll Fire Districts one through seven, budget announcement with Rita Deister, County Administrator.
Uh, do you want to announce that next week will be our formal, uh, public hearing on the twenty-nineteen budget? And Andrew does have the budget brochures that he can hand out to anyone that is interested, so that they all have all the data for the, that's in the proposed twenty-nineteen, uh, budget for next year, so at the hearing, they can come and ask questions or discuss. We did have a slight, uh, mil increase, a one-point-zero-six, a mil increase in the tw- from, from the twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen budget, so...
Okay, and a mil, I think, is right around five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, for this, the upcoming year. So a little over one mil increase, almost one-point-one.
You want to hand out the brochures to the audience and to the Commissioners, then they will be prepared to come to the hearing and...
Will it be on, will it be online, too?
We can get it online.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful for those that...
We could put the whole proposed, um, you know, the whole budget online.
Yeah. And, and just walk, I've done this a few times, but just for the TV audience, walk me through the process. So today, we're just, we're just announcing it.
Right.
And we'll get it online, and people can spend the week looking at it.
Right.
Next week is the first hearing?
It is the hearing.
The hearing, okay, so we only have one hearing, okay.
And hopefully, at the end of that time, you will approve, and then after that, um, we will be, uh, publishing the vote for the, um, for the fire districts, because they're not under the budget lead, and all but one of them, I think it was, uh, Fire District number six, did not, uh, have increase in, in... District Number 6, did not have increase in taxes from their previous budget. So those will be published after the vote, so that they can see by statute. Since we're under the lid and we did not go over the lid, we do not have to publish our vote for the regular Sling County and Kip Sewer District.
All right, thank you. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Any announcements?
I would like to make an announcement. Today is the last day to request a ballot be sent to you by mail. We are also continuing advanced voting in our office this week from 8:00 to 5:00 until Friday. Saturday, we are voting from 10:00 to 2:00, and then Monday is from 8:00 to noon.
How many have you had so far in the advanced voting, Jamie, or...
In person, as of last night, it was 412.
That's pretty good, really, for midterm primary.
And then we've mailed out around, I believe, 5:50. So, so, yeah, we're pretty much right on track, so...
Very well.
Yep.
All right. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, that we move for adjournment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. We will have meeting number two in the adjoining meeting room after a short break. Thank you for watching.